They gave us a $3,500 molar to use every year at no expense other than gas in exchange for a sign. So there you go. So that helped the budget. And we've got several things like that in the works as far as getting scaffolding and getting materials and so on and so forth. Whitecrete lumber opened up a $500 per year supply line in exchange for a sign. And we can certainly use that up. Matter of fact, we already have. As far as work we've done there, first of all, I'm going to list a few names. I'm not going to list all the family members, but the Victorsons, the Shears, the Grosses, the Crouch, family Bassett, DiPiazz, the Langs, the West Michigan Hawks, staff and players, wine guards. I'm missing people. The Crowfords, I don't know if I'm saying that right. These are all families, not just individual people who came out to work on these next few things. And that is the fact that we had the band booster building painted. It's done, trim and all. We've also replaced the countertops in there because they were falling through. The power utility building, if anybody's familiar with Skinner Field, that's where the big circuit breaker boxes are, the control of the field lights and everything sits up next to the ticket booth is completely done. The ticket booth is done. Looking to put some trim across the bottom because the wood is like this far off the ground now. It's been rotted and we need to put some trim down there. But it's completely painted, trim and all. And as of yesterday, the West Michigan Hawks just, they volunteered to come out and they finished the locker room exterior, the white portion. It's taped. If you go down there now, you'll see that it's taped. The red has not been done, but the white has been done. It's been power washed and painted. You'll also see that the towel looks worse than ever because we powder washed it. Well, actually, no, we scraped it. We didn't want to powder wash it. But we're waiting on scaffolding. The scaffolding got held up. We've got three different companies that are going to offer to let us use it without having to go rent it. Problem is, they're busy making money. They're selfish, you know? But anyway, when they get a break for a few days, if they can bring it down for a couple of days, we'll have scaffolding and go ahead and paint it. But we have stripped it down. Other than that, we've put just over $1,500 worth of plumbing into the bathrooms, public bathrooms and locker rooms. You know, it's funny, I've been coaching there this is my ninth year, and I always saw weeds. And I probably did what obviously city council, everybody did, and they said, well, it's a school's problem. Never really thought about it, but now it's my problem. They're our problem, I should say. So we fixed those. And you know, you just assume it's going to get taken care of. It doesn't, whatever. It is taken care of now. The pipes where the seals had broken and always dripped are taken care of. We replaced all three, five, six toilets, two in the locker rooms. I'm sorry. The bowls of the toilets. We didn't replace the base. The bowls, they're the basins or the backs, whatever they are. That's why I'm not the maintenance guy. Thank you. The thing you flush. Anyway, we replaced six of those, two in the visitors', two in the home, and obviously I see two in the women's, and none in the men's. The men's were fine for whatever reason. But they were all leaking and whatever, and it was just easier to replace those. Let's see. Plans for the future as far as maintenance. And now, a couple of these are things that are a little more long-term. We're hoping to make them short-term, but the new scoreboard we're still working on. Got a couple bites on actually replacing it in exchange for having someone's name on it. Obviously Meyer, a big company like that. And Ms. Bassett is working on that. We want to seal the cracks in the entryway when you come in. If you notice, the weeds keep growing up through it because, I mean, all of it's cracked. So that will be done, actually, this year. That's not a long-term one. The scoreboard could be a next-year thing. One thing that's certainly going to be next year unless somebody here would like to donate 20 or 30,000 dollars is we want to resurface the track. But that's not, we are going to seal a few of the cracks that are in it, obviously because we're worried about safety first. But resurfacing is not necessary. There's no competitions on it. There's not a safety issue. We just like it to look good. And then the tower, which I just said, the holdup on the tower is we need scaffolding. No sense renting it. When we've got it offered, we just need to be patient. So I think that's it. Was there any questions?
I was just going to say, did you bring any of the pictures?
No, we are.
Fabulous pictures, and I would love for the community who maybe doesn't go down there to see it.
We are.
But you shared some on Facebook, and they're quite fabulous, and I would love for people to see.
We have, one of our board members is actually, I don't know what you call him, he makes movies. He's actually working on a project with the boss, so he actually really makes movies, not like amateur, I guess. But anyway, he is putting together something pretty awesome for when this whole thing, you know, with music and everything, more than I could do.
Will you bring it to us?
Yeah, well, it's for you. It's for you, and it's for the public, and it'll all be, but we want every piece in there.
Sure.
He's busy, right now, there's a little sneak peek, he's been collecting footage and/or photos from back when the high school played, from players who used to be there. There's less of it because, of course, we didn't have cell phones and stuff with all that, you know? But anyway, that's what he's putting together. How it was, what it turned into, and now what it is.
Yay. Now, as far, I mean, I remember the discussions we had when we first set this ruling. We were concerned about your being able to cover the costs with the income that you had, and that we had talked about maybe even helping with some of the utilities, if I remember right.
We are all for that.
I know you would be. So I guess my first question is, two questions. One is, how are you, besides all of the donations that you're getting, how are you doing covering all of your costs, water and everything? And are we, have we been able to help at all, or have they haven't asked for it?
Number one, we have not been asked. Number two, the agreement doesn't allow us to do that.
And to let everyone know, and this wasn't something I was going to bring up because it was covered, but our maintenance director winterized the property. And I trust the man, that's what he does for a living, he shuts the water off at the street. Come February-ish, somebody might want to collect, the DPW might be able to, February, March, we got a call from a neighbor who said there was water shooting out of our concession. When it got a little bit warmer, and we said, well, that's impossible because the water's shut off at the street. Can't happen.
Two circles service are going in there.
Well, we get there, but no, that turned out not to be the case. My maintenance director got there shortly after. Of course, I got the leak contained, and he's running around crazy, and well, I'm not going to repeat all the things he was saying. And he went out to the thing, and it was on. So we don't know, I mean, there's been countless numbers of people who've had access to that over the years. We don't know how that got turned back on, but it was his words saying that he turned it off. That's what he does for a living. I believe him. We didn't want to make a big thing out of it. So the next bill came out, and it was 50 bucks. We thought, maybe it was out before the meter, and then happened to notice that one area wasn't metered. Well, I guess what, we weren't lucky. We got the next bill, started $100. That was from the Water League, which we paid. We didn't ask for assistance, didn't ask you to waive anything. It didn't run into your sewer, but we paid that too. So we are $3,100 short of where we wanted to be, but we're still doing fine. And I will have a financial, actually, for you September. Is that what it's due? So the next, or two weeks. Right. And that'll be, that'll have a full list of how everything, and you're welcome to come to our meetings, by the way. I need a man to hear. It's the 26th Monday, is that right? It's the third Monday, 26th Monday. Anyway, they're always on that Monday. They're at Skinner, actually, at the concession booth, at least during the summer. In the winter, we have them at the conference room up at Burger King, which, does anybody know they have a giant conference room at Burger King? That's awesome.
The third Monday relax this week?
Okay, this week, this month, it is a week later. So it is that 26th or 27th?
So the 27th.
27th, it is, because we have two board members going to be out of town.
Okay, so the 27th.
The 27th, but normally the third. And so you're welcome to come to those. We do a brief financial, our treasurer's report every single time. It's not going to be as comprehensive as what we bring you, but it's going to say, you know, what our balance is and what we spent that month.
Thank you.
If anybody wants to help paint, anytime. That is at 7:30 PM. Evening.
A couple of things. I have a front row seat to all of your progress, and it looks great. I'm in the big blue house with a huge maple in front. I have coffee on tap.
Oh.
Coffee on tap.
Well, if I didn't know that.
Well, yeah. So, but I saw a little kid scraping the prep box, and I was getting my phone ready to Facebook you, and I'm, oh no, he's scraping the prep, oh, okay, he's scraping.
Supposed to be doing that. He wasn't on scaffolding or ladder, by the way.
But it looks great. I think you're doing a great job.
Awesome.
You're pleased with the way it's going.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or?
Want to comment? Thanks for coming in, and I'd like to hear your reports more often. They're very helpful, and I'm very happy to see you standing here with the news by anybody and everybody who needs it.
And the more you, to piggyback on that, the more you come, the more we can celebrate you.
Okay.
And put it out that this wonderful thing is happening, and do people want to go paint?
I'm for sale. You want to make me feel good, I'll come every month. But the financial one we will have in September, but I can come next month if, I don't know.
If it works for you.
We should have the tower done by then, so I'll have something to show you.
We do appreciate everything you've done down there and keeping the field.
And I really want to stress, DiPiazz and Bassett and Victorson, they have really, especially with the painting, they, you know, I keep getting all the thank yous, and I know this is recorded, they're going to watch it. Those three did a lot of that, so.
There's always those few, there's always those few who are the backbone of any organization that gets things done. One more question. Quick. How are you doing with the fertilizing on the field? How's that doing?
We have done very little. We have.
Fertilizing, you have to cut it.
As I said at the beginning of this, we had more weed out there than we had grass. I mean, if you, I mean, what is that, TruGreen? Comes out and does that, you know? There was somebody who works for that, and he was out there, and went, could you tell us, you know, where we could start? And he digged it up, all of it, and then said, oh. He said that, because I could spend all day classifying the different things you have out here. So it's one of those things where when we do this, it's going to be a two or three-year project to get that turf back to actual turf. Right now, it's green, and that's, you know what I'm saying? So we all, right, it looks green, and to the layperson, that's wonderful, and it's painted, and it's full. So if we kill all the weeds, it'd just be a mud pit, to be honest with you. Most of it's not grass. So we, I mean, we are watering a little bit, it has been a little dry, but on a limited basis. The old one used to be in five rotations, 40 minutes each. It would start at 8 o'clock and then start again at 6:00 in the morning. Now we're doing a 10-minute rotations and only once per day. We've had a lot of rain. I think it's staying green.
Fine.
Yeah.
I'd like to say something. I'm thankful, I'm glad, and I'm group, here is about that field took it over to keep it existing the way it is, but uplifting it versus kind of demolishing it, starting from scratch.
Right. Thank you. My comment is weeds are tougher than grass, let the weeds grow.
There's to that.
Moving on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Mayor business I have done. Moving on to new business. Item A, motion to waive policy number nine to add a parcel, pardon?
12.
Item 12.
Policy 12.
Policy 12, to act on addition of parcel to existing industrial facilities tax district or display pack located at 680 West Street at first consideration. Mr. Mayor, I move that we waive policy 12 for the parcel to, adding the parcel to an existing industrial tax district or display pack located at 680 West Street at first consideration.
Second.
Okay, this will be just the wave policy number 12. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Okay, motion carries to wave policy number nine. Now I would entertain a motion to approve the addition of the parcel to the existing, to the existing industrial facility tax district or display pack located at 680 West Street. We held a public hearing at the beginning of the evening.
I make a motion to that effect.
One second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to do a roll call vote. Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Hopkin?
Yes.
Mrs. Nixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mrs. Conlin?
Yes.
Roll call votes, yes. Motion carries. Item B, motion to waive policy number nine to act on the opportunity to purchase a city strip of land by Hanson Realty LLC as first consideration.
I move to waive policy 12 to act on that.
Second. Mr. Clark, second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign as no. Hearing none, the motion passes to wave policy number nine. I would entertain a motion to approve the opportunity to purchase a city strip of land by Hanson Realty LLC. Mr. Mayor?
Since August of 1995, the City of Cedar Springs, Wolverine Worldwide and 3W Development Company entered into the development agreement. Last year, in December, the former agency parties amended the agreement by approving a second amendment to the development agreement. The second amendment to the development agreement allowed 3W Development Company the option to acquire a parcel of land described as a city strip for $1. As allowed in the second amendment to the development agreement, 3W Company has assigned its option to the city strip to Hanson Realty Company. Hanson Realty Company is now requesting to exercise the option and acquire the city strip. The city attorney drafted an agreement for the purchase of the city strip, which is agreeable to Hanson Realty Company. And I recommend, first of all, this is going to be used as part of the expansion of what's known as a Wolverine Worldwide building. And the city strip that we're talking about is actually between the south border of that building and roughly the north edge of that access road that runs from West Street back to the water treatment plant. So they're going to use that because they're going to expand on the south side to include about 20,000 square feet of office spaces. They're also going to do some parking, a lot of improvements of that nature. So I'd recommend the council approve the option for the city strip and enter a purchase agreement with Hanson Realty LLC, and also authorize the mayor and the clerk to sign the necessary paperwork to close on the property even until April 20.
Mr. Mayor, I will make a motion to purchase, to allow Hanson Realty LLC to purchase this city strip of land, my statement is correctly. I'm going to make a motion to approve the option to purchase the city strip of land from Hanson Realty LLC.
Second.
Okay, second. Discussion. Hearing none.
I have one here. This strip of land we're selling out to Hanson's or they're selling it? Isn't it display packet, was it?
Hanson, Hanson Realty owned the property, and leases the property to display pack.
Okay, so they'll be owning it. And that's the one we sold for a dollar?
Correct, yes.
And it's got like 20 grand fixed in it or something. Yeah.
Not that one.
Okay, not that one.
See, Wolverine Worldwide does not own our buildings. 3W owns, they lease the property to Wolverine Worldwide. This is the same type of situation.
And this is, that 12 foot strip of land, right? This is that?
Very long and narrow.
And along the access, it's basically like an easement piece, and they can't build if you don't.
Wolverine Worldwide owns the option, and now they're just transferring it to Hanson Realty.
And Hanson?
The same deal. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a roll. Mr. Clark, yes. Mr. Hopkin?
Yes.
Mrs. Nixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mrs. Conlin?
Yes.
Roll call votes, yes. Motion carries. Next item is number C. Motion to waive policy number 12 to act on Nelson Township fire agreement at first consideration.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to waive policy 12 to act on the Nelson Township fire agreement at first consideration. Should it say the annual Nelson Fire Township Agreement at first consideration?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Clark. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying no. Motion carries. I would entertain a motion to approve the fire, annual fire agreement between the City of Cedar Springs and Nelson Township for fire services. Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve of fire, the annual fire agreement between the City of Cedar Springs and Nelson Township for fire services.
One second.
Mr. Mayor, would you speak to this?
Yes, for some reason, I'm known to myself for the Nelson Township subsidiary. This was not, didn't come to, before either government body or corporate had inspired the end of part. However, we still provide fire services. And so, really, it's an annual renewal because each year we recalculate the costs, and it's based on a three-year smolder. So we're going to talk with Tom Marine, and what we're going to try to do is meet and just determine how can we make this a multi-year agreement so we don't have to renew it every year, and more importantly, discuss at a greater length how we can fine tune that smoothing arrangement so we don't get those large spikes, especially by big-ticket equipment such as a fire truck. Because they want a plan, just like we've been doing with our CIP. So we need to spend some time on that, and our goal is to bring to the council after the first year another agreement that will be multi-year with a global smoothing mechanism.
Thank you. Any discussion? I'm just curious, how many years have we had this agreement with Nelson? Where do you know?
Since the first time they signed the first paper. I have no clue.
Nobody knows.
It goes back at least probably either 10 years or more.
I think it was before that.
It could even possibly be 15 to 20, I haven't.
Because when I was on, they were discussing it. It's been a very nice working, it's been a very nice working agreement for Nelson and the city.
Apparently so effective that it could no longer influence for several months, and we need to keep doing it.
It's been under the rug. Any other discussion? Hearing none, a call for roll call. Miss Conlin?
Yes.
Miss Powell?
Yes.
Mrs. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Hopkin?
Yes.
Roll call votes, yes. Motion carries. Okay, item D, motion to waive policy number 12 to act on resolution number 2015-23, a resolution to amend the City of Cedar Springs 2015/16 budget at first consideration. I entertain a motion. Mr. Mayor, I move that we waive policy number 12.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Take the money, I'll do a roll call. Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Hopkin?
Yes.
Mrs. Nixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mrs. Conlin?
Yes.
Mr. Hall votes, yes. I would entertain a motion to approve resolution 2015-23, a resolution to amend the City of Cedar Springs 2015/16 budget.
Mr. Mayor, I will make a motion to amend the City of Cedar Springs budget for 2015, 2016 at the first consideration. Resolution number 2015-23.
Do I hear support? Support? Mr. Mayor, would you speak to this?
Earlier this year, the council approved a four thousand dollar donation to the museum, and there's some requirements that they have to perform certain things to qualify for that donation. It was not a budgeted item, so we're taking the money from our fund balance, creating new line items and other funds available to get that payment.
Okay. Any discussion? I'll tell them.
That community promotions budget, isn't that coming out of that staff? Is that where you're funneling it through?
Right, yes.
So they'll take it out of the fund balance, put it into the community promotion fund budget, and then take it out to give it to you.
We just need to move it. Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Change to money? Mrs. Conlin?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mrs. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Hopkin?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Roll call votes, yes. Motion carries. Okay, item P, I believe, motion to approve policy number 14, the policy regarding the public inspection of assessing records at first consideration.
So to clarify, Mr. Mayor, this is a discussion item?
It's a... Mr. Mayor? It's first consideration, yes. Yeah, so this is, there's no motion, this is a discussion, and would you speak to that? Mr. Mayor?
This is, this policy is recommended by our assessor, Mr. Michigan is going around and very aggressively auditing assessing operations, and this is one of the places that we're lacking as well as other assessing units in the state. So he wants to get this on our policy roll so that we won't be hit that when they come auditing. So this spells out how people can come in and get information on the assessment.
So to clarify, is this part of the Open Meetings Act changes that the state is implementing?
What?
This policy, is this in relationship to the changes that the state made legally regarding expanded access to what's foible and the timeframe that's foible in, and that kind of stuff? Is that, is this completely separate?
Completely separate.
Or is this part of that?
Okay.
Okay.
Any discussion? Mr. Mayor? Is there any possibility that the auditors would come this month or next month?
The assessor was not that concerned with it. Even if they do, we could say we're in a, we're in a...
Your problem.
Okay, okay, very good. Any other discussion?
I have a question. So what is, what is the gist of policy 14? Is it that the public has the right to come in and inspect them at such times, or?
It just, it just lays it out, yeah.
Oh, okay.
The biggest issue is those units of government that just have a part-time assessor. Those that have a full-time assessor, the assessor's always there, you know, go see whoever, go work with you. This just lays it out, or if the assessor's not there, you come in, here's the process that we're going to follow to make sure that you can access those records.
It spells out pretty in the patent. Okay. Any other discussion on this item? Okay, we'll probably see this next month. Okay, item F, motion to approve a license agreement between the City of Cedar Springs and Yankee Zephyr Racing Promotion.
And again, Mr. Mayor, this is a discussion item, correct?
Yeah. I'm seeing that it's a, approved their license agreement.
It's just first consideration.
First consideration. Okay. Is there another discussion, Mr. Manager? Come on, let's see.
Yes, last year, or earlier this year, Yankee Zephyr Racing Promotion held a snowmobile race on the city property of the Red Bull Williams. Didn't have a lot of time to advertise it, but regardless, they had an excellent turnout to the point where he wants to try this again. He's proposing a couple of changes. Number one, he wants to make it into a two-day event. He also wants to, we had last year just a snowmobile drag race. He wants to do a snow cross race, too. He's also moving the location of the races more to the west end of the property. So, if you can envision West Street extended south, it would be the property to the west, but it would not include the property used by the front end club. At the extreme south end of the portion of that property, he wants to smooth that out as, so he can have as smooth a surface for that drag strip as he can. What he plans to do is road till down six inches and then drag it out, smooth it to the best of his ability. Plan it by our environmental attorney as well as our engineers because it is a regulated area because we do have that cap to a twelve-inch depth. As long as we're not going below that twelve-inch depth, we're good to go. So, that's all been taken care of. He's going to pay us again five hundred dollars for the use of that property. He's also going to contract with the fire department for medical personnel as well as a medical unit to be on standby. It should be a great thing. He likes the area because it's accessible from the white line trail. Snowmobiles can just ride up from where they're at and ride down and get off the trail and come in. And it reduces the number of snowmobiles that might happen to be trailing in. So, he's, he's anxious to do it.
Good deal.
It's exciting.
Yes, it's good that they can utilize that property until the event someday, we get a big factory built out there. Any other comments, discussions?
I can say that I went last year, it was very nice. It was ten bucks to get in and, but we had perfect weather, just perfect. It was very well-run, a great crowd there and going through town, the gas stations were busy, the restaurants were busy, the hub was busy. I don't know about the other bars, but this is a great asset to our community. And I also see city staff will be on site during the process to ensure the compliance of the smoothly. So, I'm assuming that's a public service from our city. But, good, okay.
Great.
Just wanted to know.
Great.
Are they going to be asking to become like an event, like a community event?
Yeah, not yet.
A festival?
Yeah, not yet.
Be very supportive of that?
I would think it's right now a little premature. I think he wants to try it at least a couple of years, maybe three, four, to see if it's got legs.
I would love to see it.
Great, great. Any other discussion on that? We'll see you next month. Okay, item G, motion to waive policy number twelve to act on a resolution twenty dash, or twenty fifteen dash twenty-four, recognizing the twenty fifteen Red Plantal Festival as a community event as first consideration. I would entertain a motion to waive policy number twelve.
Mr. Mayor, I will make a motion to waive policy twelve to act on making the Red Plantal Festival a community event.
The office thinker. Any discussion on that? Okay, I'll do a roll call. Mr. Clark?
Mr. Mayor?
We're reading policy.
This is just policy number twelve.
Oh, yes.
Are we all...
I'll speak when I ask.
Are there any other discussion? No, thank you. Mr. Clark?
That's nothing. Yes.
Mr. Hopkins?
Yes.
Ms. Nixon?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Ms. Conlin?
Yes.
Mr. Hall votes yes. Now, the motion to approve resolution twenty dash fifteen twenty-four, approving the twenty fifteen Red Plantal Festival as a community event.
Mr. Mayor, I will make a motion to recognize the twenty fifteen Red Plantal Festival as a community event at the first consideration.
Second.
Mr. Hopkins, second. Is there, Mrs. President?
Madam President.
Madam President, Tracy.
Michelle Tracy, President of the Red Plantal Festival. Um, our theme this year is...
Address, please.
Address?
Name and address.
Um, what's our address? Eighteen East South Main, sorry. East, South, whatever, Main. The theme this year, it's a seventy-six year, our theme is there's a new sheriff in town. So, we're kind of excited about that. We're getting a lot of positive feedback in Sand Lake that everybody was excited and they're already working on their floats. And so, we think that's going to be a good, a good theme. Scale back a little bit this year, you know, last year was the seventy-fifth. So, we expanded, had the lumberjacks back, things like that. We're not going to have that this year, so we're kind of scaling back a little bit. Um, so I think you'll see the same kind of old festival you've seen for many, many years. Shirley Merlington is our grand marshal, you already know that. Nine people on the Red Plantal Board, all volunteers. And our brochure should be at the printer probably last week. We're kind of behind dealing with things. So, certainly, we're happy that you voted the way you did tonight. It's been a long time coming. And certainly, you know, appreciate the improved relationship we have at the, at least the majority of the council. And hope that we can get through this year, working with the city and get back to the way, way we were eight years ago before, before all the things started. So, thank you very much.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none. Call for a roll call. Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Hopkins?
Yes.
Ms. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Ms. Conlin?
Yes.
Mr. Hall votes yes. Motion carries. Item H. Motion to waive policy number twelve to act on waiving all fees for the twenty fifteen Red Plantal Festival. I would entertain a motion for policy number twelve.
Second.
Second. Any discussion on waiving policy number twelve? Hearing none. Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Hopkins?
Yes.
Ms. Nixon?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Ms. Conlin?
Yes.
Ms. Powell votes yes. Now, a, a motion to waive all fees for the Red Plantal Festival. For eight fees, peddler's fees, escrow fees, and any other fees.
Mr. Mayor, I will make a motion to waive all fees for the Red Plantal Festival for twenty fifteen. Support?
Any discussion?
I would just like to say that I really hope we're making a precedent that this is how we're going to treat organizations that want to do wonderful things in our community. All of them.
Thank you. Any other comments and call for a vote? Ms. Conlin?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Ms. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Hopkins?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Powell votes yes. Motion carries. Okay, item I, discussion regarding waiving sidewalk display and permits for park benches. Mr. Hopkins, I believe you requested that?
Yes, as I mentioned in the workshop, the, uh, when it was at the summit meeting, I can't remember which month that was.
It was May.
May. Mr. Taylor and Councilman Powell and a couple of other folks was at the summit meeting with me. And we sent through some different things that the MML suggested, different councils or different municipalities, you know, worked through to make their community better. And one of them was being less strict on some of the ordinances. And two, they was referring to downtowns that started waiving the fees associated with outdoor seating, outdoor sales display, permits, and outdoor A-frame signs. And they said after they started doing that, the businesses became more enthused and they started prospering more and then downtown started third, uh, fortune. And so, I just thought it'd be something that maybe our council, our municipality would consider looking into that idea.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Nixon?
Um, I think that would actually be great. What I'd like to see is maybe we do it for a year on a child basis. Just make sure everyone can do all they need to do with the ordinances so we're not tripping people or blocking the sidewalk. And perhaps after that, we can make it more permanent to go through.
I think that's what they thought, most of them did it five years. Like you still want them to follow through the same policies you do now, just not pay fees.
Mr. Mayor? Ms. Conlin, you have anything?
I, well, first off, I, as I stated before, I feel very uncomfortable having this conversation with Mr. Hopkins, bringing this off feeling that he needs to gain financial gain from this. I'm more than happy to have this conversation, but I feel like it needs to be brought by someone not sitting on council, not looking to have a fee waived for their business. Like that's sort of a problem.
True.
Beyond that, I, I have a real difficulty with all of these being lumped together. A bench is not the same thing as a sandwich sign. Having just sat in a meeting, folks at Rockford, finding discussions they have, we do not have sandwich board signs, at all, like ever. They, they think there's, um, they hurt the way that businesses look. So, and I'm not saying I agree or disagree, but I see it as a very different conversation than a bench, which has like public utility.
Thank you. Ms. Powell?
The one nice thing about having outdoor seating is if you have your chairs out and your display out, people know you're open. And that would probably eliminate the need for the sandwich board. But I, I don't have any, I think there, that the more we contribute and, and show off our business as better off we're going to be. But I think someone else besides Hugh Perry has to bring that to council because of the conflict that he's in. And that's why I'm supporting it that way.
Mr. Clark? I know you're anti-...
I just can't get used to going in order.
I'll get used to it. Now, the way this is written, I'm, I'm still trying to understand it. Sidewalk display, permit of bench fees. Is there a permit fee and a bench fee? Or is it permit fee for the display? I, I'm confused by the writing, but...
Fees for all periods, sub-fees.
What is the...
There's a fee for each thing. A permit and a fee.
And a fee for the display and the bench.
And a sign.
The display is the sign?
No.
No. So, what is the display?
The sign is where you put out product. Or where they use...
Okay.
The sign is where you put out...
I got the, I got the board.
Which is where I'm saying, I feel like they're, they're three separate companies.
Yeah. Well, okay, I have a question on the benches. I noticed we have a couple of businesses now that have benches out. A bike rack, nice. Now, what about other businesses? Do we have some kind of a consensus from the other businesses? Would they put a bench out? A nice bench out if there were, there were no fee for them to do that? Do we have any idea that that's even something that the, the other businesses are thinking?
They're, they're, from my standpoint, I'm talking with other businesses. Yes, if they didn't have to pay fees on different things, they would be more likely to put stuff out for a display and for seating.
How many folks would you say, how many businesses would you say you...
At least seven, if I know.
Seven? Thank you. Yeah, I'd say two, you know, we're talking three different things here. So, we need to have discussions on three different items with each one. Nice, though. Uh, we did discuss this at the planning commission, you know, maybe such thing pushed back down to them with the stuff, and then they're back up. I don't know. Mr. Manager?
Now, it's an ordinance. You know, the, the, in terms of the, if you're looking at the display sign, if you're looking at the benches, the outdoor display, the process is already in place. It comes down to setting the fee. And the, and the planning commission doesn't set the fee. That's done through council, through staff recommendation. So, I don't know that there's any reason for it to go back down to the planning commission because they can't say, we're going to waive the fees. So, that's, that's the purview of the council.
If they would strike the permit, though?
I think it's, I would not recommend striking permits. We need to have the permits to make sure that they're following the ordinance requirements. Reserve proper placement and things of that nature.
Trying to help the council.
Right, well, yeah, that. And with the bench, it's got to be so far from the curb and not extending too far out. And so, we need the permits.
Basically, permits cover our administrative fee?
The permits give us nothing. The fees attached to the permits would cover administrative review, or that's the thought.
One time deal for a year or...
One, one shot for a year.
And they're ten dollars?
They're bringing prices.
Seating is ten dollars, twenty-five dollars per year. Sidewalk, sign is twenty-five dollars per year. Display. Okay.
But we still, we have three different items, but yeah, we would have more discussion on this in the future, I believe.
I would like to request that come out for discussion next month, being not a business owner. Do I concede your...
Any other? Okay, moving on to item J. Uh, motion to waive policy number twelve to act on the resolution number twenty fifteen dash twenty-five, recognizing the Chamber of Commerce's August and September sidewalk sales and movies in the park as a community event at first consideration.
Kind of point of order. We did discuss this last month. It was just put off for, um, August and September until this month because last month, we had to waive policy twelve for...
Nope, I know they noted, but they have added moving, a movie night.
They just send it.
It was?
It just wasn't delineated, I don't think, on the previous form. There were like dates, but no description. Somebody didn't know that's what it was.
Our clerk has it down as to waive policy number twelve.
I, I would agree maybe with councilmates, and I don't know that we need to.
Well, let's do it anyway.
Okay, so moved.
Support?
Support.
Okay. All those in favor of waiving policy number twelve for the Chamber of Commerce's August, September sidewalk sales and movies in the park as a community event? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes for policy number twelve. I would entertain a motion to approve resolution twenty fifteen dash twenty-five, approving the Chamber of Commerce's August and September sidewalk sales and movies in the park as a community event.
Mr. Mayor, I will make a motion to... Approving the Chamber of Commerce's August and September sidewalk sales and movies in the park as a community event.
With your support? Mr. Kepler?
Um, it's basically repeats, well, I guess we have a... Okay, all right, so of the July thing. It's the, uh, the downtown, bringing in the vendors and so on and so forth. We've got some coming from Rockford and some of the home-based businesses, little set up downtown. Plus, hopefully, all of the, the, the businesses on Main Street, we'll, we'll set something up. But the big thing is actually the movies in the park. Um, where I guess in August is Polar Express?
No, July is Polar Express.
July is Polar Express, like I said. ET is in August, right? Right. And then, uh, the game stands tall.
Any other discussion?
Um, after the last month's discussion, the president and the chamber made these for Councilman Powell.
Great, thank you.
They color-coded for her and labeled for each of the events, saves her time.
This will be on file with the city park?
Yep.
Thank you.
I had a question.
Any other discussion? Yes.
I had a question on time. Am I, did I miss that in the packet? Like the times are still not clear to me?
I didn't see dates or time in it.
Dates or times?
It's the second Saturday of each of those months. I'm sorry, I don't have the exact date. It's the second Saturday of July, August, September.
Okay, so July, we need to add...
Well, July was already approved at the last.
Right, okay, so August, the second Saturday.
Second Saturday.
But the dates are on the application, you know.
Oh, because they're not on the stuff, they, it's not in our packet.
And September twelve.
Okay, so we need to make sure those are added. And do we have timeframes?
The, the movie part may start as early as six and then get done. The movie can start just before dark. And then, after that, it'll get done, and Saturday...
But I don't, I don't have a problem with how long it is. We just need a...
Beginning and ending.
We just need the beginning and ending. So, midnight?
Or, you know, it certainly wouldn't be midnight.
Eleven at the late.
Yeah, these are family movies. It's just, we got to kind of play it by, I, I don't want to say eight, and it's eight fifteen. I'd say no later than ten.
So, seven to...
But people might be hanging out or something.
Six to ten thirty?
Yeah, does that sound good?
Yes.
Sounds good.
And then, for the Saturday portion, the sidewalk sales are nine to three, but if it gets rained out... it gets rained out on Friday, it'll be on Saturday, so we're asking from nine A.M. to ten thirty P.M.
Okay. Again, is this helpful if we have more specifics? So that we know how to support you more, how to get the word out more?
Questions from the public.
You can't answer those if, well, sometime.
Right.
On Saturday.
Well, I mean, the event goes, you know, we could get there at six. We're not going to start the movie at six, but there'll be other things to do.
Okay.
You know.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Mr. Clark?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. I thought I had a question here and I'm checking something on the insurance. Okay, it's my understanding that the insurance policy should include the naming of the city and.
As of Thursday, I believe it does.
Yeah, some of the ones that she's got right there.
Oh, okay.
The certificate holder?
I didn't think that Halloween was a, uh, community event, it was just.
Was it technically, no, we don't.
We, yeah, we have to get it up for this.
That's coming.
Some of them are just for future ones, so you don't have to FOIA any times.
That's exciting that we're getting it.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, our, our original company that we used had you guys listed as well. This, the reason it disappeared is because we changed insurance carriers.
Okay.
And it was missed when we got the policy.
Okay.
Excellent.
Any other discussion before I call for a vote? Hearing none. Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Hopkins?
Yes.
Mrs. Nixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mrs. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Powell votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Good luck. Item K, we have a motion to approve a site plan approval for MacIntyre on the Pines. And we would also have a policy number twelve.
So, Mr. Mayor, I will make a motion to suspend policy twelve to vote on item K for MacIntyre builders.
Okay, any discussion? The motion moved in seconded? Hearing none. All votes in favor of waiving policy number twelve for Mr. McIntyre on the Pines addition? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, saying no. Motion carries. This time I would entertain a motion to effect to approve the site plan for Mr. McIntyre's Pines additions. And we have, is there wording in the language?
I do. Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to amend the planned unit development site plan and corresponding special land use for a two point one five acre parcel known as the Pines condominium, parcel number forty-one dash zero-two dash two-five dash two-eight-zero dash zero-zero-seven, to Dwayne McIntyre developer stated from the previous month's planning commission meeting.
Fourth, Mr. Clark, removed in seconded, is there any discussion?
The fourth, three minutes.
Mr. Manager, you have anything?
Yes, this was on the planning commission's agenda for their, uh, July seventh meeting. They've approved a recommendation to council that their recommendation is approval of the revised, for the amendment to the Pines planned unit development, uh, and specifically that the council determined that their sidewalks are only needed on one side of Needlewood, right? That would be the west side, that would be the west side. Also that a determination regarding the pathway connection to the white pine trail is not needed, determined. And that, uh, Mr. McIntyre's had, or does have correspondence from the D N R saying that they do not want a connection to the trail in that area. And finally, uh, contingent on the review and approval from, uh, other applicable departments and agencies. So that's their recommendation to approve it and determine that sidewalks are not needed on the west side of Needlewood Drive nor is this connection to the white pine trail.
Thank you. Those making motion, agree with those following?
Yes, that reviews the part where I said as stated after the previous month's planning commission meeting.
Mr. Clark, did you hear that?
Yes.
Thank you. Do you wish to speak to anything to it, Mr. McIntyre?
I think it's all that's left.
Thank you. I'll call, any other discussion? Call for a roll? Mrs. Conley?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mrs. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Hopkins?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
And Powell votes yes, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. McIntyre. Thank you. Moving on to item ten, I believe. We have the manager's report.
First thing is our U S D A project will start on the twentieth of July. Yesterday afternoon or early evening, there was an open house. All, uh, people living in the affected areas were invited and we had two people show up in two hours. We had the opportunity. So that's going to start on the twentieth. Just to put council on notice that we will be paying the contractor prior to those checks being approved by council.
Right.
And I'm comfortable with that because the U S D A has to approve every bill and they won't release any money for the city to make payments until they've approved it. And based on my experience working with U S D A, they're, they're tough. So they're gonna, they're gonna approve it, we'll get the money, and then we can extend the money and that will be reported out to council in the next one of bills. So just to let you know. There'll be several months of that, correct? Oh, yes, the, the project's going to be ongoing on for a number of months. In last month's, I erroneously reported that the library and the city were going to share a cost of the FOIA. Since then, the library has adopted their own FOIA policy, so they won't be cost sharing with us. We recently received our MERS actuarial, uh, evaluation report for our pension system containing really good news. Previously, our funded ratio had been eighty-eight percent, it increased to ninety-three percent. Our unfunded accrued liability has decreased by a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Now, uh, we have an unfunded liability of two hundred and seventeen, almost two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. Of that, we have a hundred and seventy-five thousand designated in our fund balance to cover that. So really, in essence, we have about forty-two thousand dollars unfunded liability in our pension program, which is outstanding. So Deb and I have already talked about this, the fact that our monthly payment is supposed to, is projected to reduce by fifty percent in two thousand, or two thousand and sixteen. So we've talked about keeping our recent rate of pay.
Same.
The same and building up that balance so we are going to be over one hundred percent funded, just for any mishaps that we have. So I think that's great news and as long as we can afford it, I would suggest we continue to do that. Tax rule, uh, as I reported to council, the city assessor has found that two organizations that being the Red Plankton Festival Open Network put out on our tax rolls. And according to the assessor, neither organization per state law or exempt the property taxes. He has and or will put the properties on the tax rule, notified both organizations and explained to them the reasons for the change. And the chance exists that as it becomes more familiar on our tax rule, there might be other similar changes. Uh, he's also working with me on a couple of other situations. First of all, the flying club where we have an agreement for the use of six acres of city property of the old Lagoon site. The way the license, the agreement is written, they have exclusive rights to that property. And as it's not open to the general public, then that property has to be put on the tax roll. And the entity responsible for paying the taxes would be the same. So I've had a, a helpful discussion with the president of the club. We're going to meet, uh, later this month and resolve it. And I think the resolution is going to be they will just reimburse the city for the taxes. We'll call it good. The other situation we're dealing with, there is a farmer that wants to mow the grass at the wastewater treatment plant. Uh, state law indicates that if public property is being used by a not, by a for-profit organization for profit, then that property has to be taxed. Again, this, being the city's property, we would be the ones, uh, responsible for the tax bill. Then, working with, with the assessor on.